...of the water quality within the city of Leominster Water Distribution System, which is a continuous goal of the Department of Public Works. We received all of the recommendations that we requested. Everything was in the positive. I'll go to the public. Is there any member of the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this communication? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this communication? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? I'll go to Legal Affairs. Any comment, Council Freedom?
No.
Council Bonanza?
No comment.
And just the council at large, does anyone have any questions or comments at this Seeing none, Mr. President, I'll close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Assume that this amendment would have to be approved by the city council. We did check with the city solicitor and we were told that such an amendment was proper. So at this time, I would move to amend Communication 24 to read, allow Giggles and Grins LLC, instead of Roll On America, to connect into the Lemister water system through a special act of the legislature, and I would just be looking for a second.
Second, by further ahead, Council Bonanza on the second. Are there any questions on the amendment? If not, all is in favor of the recommendation to amend as stated by the legal affairs chairman, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, C-24 has been amended. Mr. Chairman, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. I'm, I, I probably do a little bit of committee work here by May. I'm, I'm in favor of going forward and allowing this. I reread the 2018 letter from Brian Riley, which was pretty strong as to the reasons that it should be allowed. I guess we've tried to get some type of the answer from Coleman and Page and we haven't. But my position would be to go forward with this. It turns out that it can't be done, we can always revisit it. But I think that the head of the water department, Roger Brooks, is in favor of it, the mayor's in favor of it. We allowed Orchard Hills to do this very thing, and they're right next door. So, you know, my position would be to go forward tonight. I'd ask you to check with my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk, Council Frida.
I agree. We, we voted on this years ago, so I'm still in support.
Okay. We do have a recommendation, but I will yield the floor to the third member, Council Bonanza.
Yes, I, I see this as sort of two things. One is the substantive act of allowing them to connect to our system. In the discussion I had with Mr. Brooks, he sees this as negligible in terms of the amount of water they would use. So I don't think there's any real question or problem with the substantive side of it, at least not to me. But he also indicated that he would prefer to see an intermunicipal agreement as opposed to a special act of the legislature. So that part of it, you know, the petition reads special act of the legislature, I'm not sure even the petitioner wants that. So it's going to be more complex to do it that way. My preference is that we permit it as an intermunicipal agreement to be worked out between the attorney for the petitioner and the city solicitor. But I'll defer to members of my committee if you have a different viewpoint. I just think that's probably a better way to go based on the recommendation of Mr. Brooks.
That's a twist in the process. I yield the floor back to the chairman first.
I, yeah, I mean, if you, if you read the 2018 letter from the city solicitor, I mean, it gives, it gives you the, the clear benefits to the city to do it this way regardless of the cumbersome process. I'm personally not sold either way. We can maybe add a condition on or another amendment, or, you know, perhaps add or intermunicipal agreement, you know, whichever, whichever way works out. I'll ask Council Frida for her position on it.
Council Frida?
I really believe that we should do an intermunicipal agreement, stay consistent with everything else that we've done in the city. We have intermunicipal agreements with Lunenburg, other parts of Lancaster, I really think that we should, I don't know why he's stressing, I do know why he's explained it, but I think it'd be just as effective having an intermunicipal agreement. So I'm, I'm more inclined to go with that as well.
I yield the floor back to the chairman. Thank you.
Why don't we, I mean, why don't we have a second amendment to this petition?
I'm gonna slam the brakes on that. I think that what has to happen at this point is that there are two different concepts here, and I would like to give this one potential leave to withdraw from the committee and let them do the one, write it with the mayor, do it right, and submit it to you. It could be, it's gonna be a quick resolve anyway, just a couple of meetings.
Well, that's, if that's, if that's the case, then I, I would ask for further time again.
Okay.
And have, have the city solicitor and Roger Brooks connect and let us know.
Right. Just my opinion, you can do what you want.
Yeah, I, I'm.
Bless you.
I'm not, I'm not married to any idea. I mean, I, to me, the substantive thing is, you know, us allowing them to connect, you know, how we enforce payment, if it's not paid is, is, you know, something that can be worked out. So I'm, I'm really open to, I would, I could personally amend this again to add or intermunicipal agreement, or I could go with further time. So I'll ask you to pull my committee again.
I yield the second member.
What would we accomplish with further time? We'd be in the same situation after that. If we, if the president doesn't want us to amend it again, then we're gonna be in the same position. I don't disagree with you, I just don't know if we'll be doing the same thing.
I, I think by giving it further time, I, I think you just, you probably save a couple of weeks. If they come back and say it's gonna be an intermunicipal agreement, then all we've got to do is amend it in two weeks and vote on it. If we, if we give it leave to withdraw, we gotta start the whole process over again. So it's really just a savings of two weeks is all it is. Or amend it now.
Council Bonanza?
I think I like the chairman's position. Let's, let's make it or. And I, I would say one other thing. By special act of the legislature or intermunicipal agreement in the discretion of the city solicitor, I can live with Mr. Riley's judgment on that.
Yeah.
And then we can, then we can get this moving at least ahead to that juncture, and between the attorneys, they can figure it out. Again, it's, it's a negligible amount of water. So that's what, the only reason I brought it up is because that's what Roger suggested. And, you know, we've always been used, Roger's been giving us a lot of good advice over the years, so I think they can work it out.
All right, so I'd ask the third member if he'd like to make a motion to amend.
Sure. I would move to amend C-24 to include through a special act of the legislature or an intermunicipal agreement in the discretion of the city solicitor.
Okay, I'll second that.
We have a recommendation and a second on the floor. Are there any questions or comments on that recommendation to amend? Council Frida?
I don't have a question on amending it. I just have a question on going back to when we voted on this years ago. I mean, it was total agreement, we voted on it as an intermunicipal agreement. So I don't know if that would happen to that petition when they decided not to go forward with it. Everybody was in agreement, so I mean, it's the same as it is now. I don't think it should matter, but if we have two votes of the council contradicting each other, I just wondered if there's, there's anything in there. Maybe that's where we should ask the city solicitor as well. You can pull up that last vote on it.
Yeah. I mean, I think the difference is they didn't, they didn't sign it. They didn't sign the intermunicipal agreement, so they're not a party to it. And now we're, you know, quite a few years later.
Right.
But we still all voted on it.
Yeah, oh, no, we did. No question, we did.
Absolutely. So are there any other comments on the motion to amend or the recommendation to amend? All those in favor of amending it as stated, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, it has been amended. I yield the floor back to the chairman of legal affairs.
My recommendation, Mr. President, would be to grant Communication 24 as amended twice tonight.
Okay, thank you. I yield the floor to the second member for qualification.
I agree with that.
Third member?
I'm in support.
Thank you. Council, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 24 as amended this evening. We had a first and a second time amendment. Are there any questions on the recommendation from the committee? If not, this would be a roll call vote. We only need a majority vote, but I want to make it clear, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Ottinger.
Yay.
Council Bonanza.
Yay.
Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
I should record a yay by a vote of eight to nothing. Communication 24 has been granted. Thank you. We now move on to public service. Petition 5-20, is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. I just want to double check through you. Do we have the public hearing on this? We did. Okay, I thought so. Because it says to be determined, to be determined, so I, I thought we did, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay, 5-20, National Grid and Verizon, New England. Request to install one jointly owned pole and remove one jointly owned pole on Hall Street, beginning at a point approximately 265 feet west of the center line, near the intersection of West Street, and continuing approximately 15 feet in a north direction. We did have the public hearing.
We have not had the public hearing yet on this one.
Oh, we have a public hearing.
Right, we're gonna sit there. Now, why don't you read it to her?
I thought we, I thought we'd done it, okay.
No, there's a few of them that came through, not this one yet.
Okay, all right, I apologize.
Go ahead.
October 15th at 6:40 p.m.
So it's October 15th?
Yes.
At 6:40 p.m.
Which is a Tuesday because of the holiday.
Would you like to establish that hearing?
Uh, yes. It'd be regular course with, it'd be regular, it's not gonna be regular course.
Further time.
Further time. Establishing the hearing.
It matters, it matters before the council. Should it be there?
Further time.
Further time with, we need to establish a hearing for 6:40 on 10:15.
On October 15th at 6:40 p.m. Council, sir, the recommendation read to go further time with establishing the hearing for October 15th, 6:40 p.m. Are there any questions or comments, counselor?
As usual, I'll be abstaining, partially owned by my employer. Thank you.
Okay, that's Council David Cormier, thank you, appreciate it. By the way, for your information, the polls are already in, just to let you know. I've been dealing with them for three months on this one. All those in favor of establishing the hearing date and further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing. 5-20 has been given further time. There will be a hearing on October 15th at 6:40 p.m. Thank you.
What happens if we deny it?
They have to remove it. Okay, I'll fill you guys in. I'll fill the council in that night of the hearing. We have ways and means. I'll yield the floor to Council Frida, who will be the acting chairwoman tonight. Are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. With measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of the following individuals to the office of emergency management. Assistant directors, Richard Garvin and Dan Thibodeau. Deputy directors, Tom Piper and Al Stahl. We all know these people very well, they've been there serving us for a long time. So my recommendation, I'll go to.
Council Dobrowski.
Council Dobrowski to.
I'm in support.
Thank you. All set?
Yep.
We're gonna do this in block? Just with all the names, okay.
Sure, I think that's fine.
Council, sir, the recommendation read to confirm the reappointments of the assistant director and deputy directors. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Ottinger.
Yay.
Council Bonanza.
Yay.
Council Shaleph Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
I should, I should record a yay by a vote of eight to nothing. Confirmation is taking place, thank you. We now have 4-20, is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am. 4-20, election order. An order relative to the November 5th, 2019 municipal election. Through the chair of the clerk, do I have to read anything on that? Do I have it?
Do you want me to read it instead?
If, if we're gonna yield the floor back to the clerk, you've done a lot of work tonight.
Well, I don't, I don't mind doing it, it's just, I just want it understood that I'm jumping in here to fill in.
The whole thing.
Not that I didn't do my homework.
No, no, I'm just, I'm trying to.
I'll read that, that's fine.
I don't mind if you don't want to.
Oh, that's fine.
Charles.
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys can read the next ordinance.
You don't have to read.
Okay, here we go.
Charles, take your time, council.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City of Lemister Municipal Election Order, November 5th, 2019. Voted, that meeting of the citizens of the city qualified to vote in the municipal election shall be held on Tuesday, the 5th day of November, 2019, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. with the purpose of casting their votes in the municipal election for the candidates of the following offices. Mayor for this municipality, four counselors at large for this municipality, one counselor of each ward for this municipality, three school committee members at large for this municipality, one school committee member for each ward for this Commonwealth.
For this municipality?
Huh?
For this municipality.
All offices to have terms of two years, beginning on the first Monday of January 2020. It is further ordered that the following polling places are designated by the city council. Ward 1 Precinct A, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward 1 Precinct B, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward 1 Precinct C, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward 2 Precinct A, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Iskloide Avenue. Ward 2 Precinct B, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Iskloide Avenue. Ward 2 Precinct C, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Iskloide Avenue. Ward 3 Precinct A, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward 3 Precinct B, Fraternal Order of Eagles, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward 3 Precinct C, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward 4 Precinct A, Senior Citizen Dropin' Center, 5 Pond Street. Ward 4 Precinct B, Lemister Veterans Center, 100 West Street. Ward 4 Precinct C, Lemister Veterans Center, 100 West Street. Ward 5 Precinct A, Auditorium, City Hall, 25 West Street. Ward 5 Precinct B, Auditorium, City Hall, 25 West Street. Ward 5 Precinct C, First Baptist Church of Lemister, 23 West Street. Hereof fail naught and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon, at the time and place of said voting given our hands is 23rd day of September 2019.
Thank you, counselor.
And this is to be ordered, posted in all places that we just mentioned.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on 4-20? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, 4-20 has been granted. Thank you. We now, we will now move on to new business. We have a first reading of the ordinance, beginning with Communication 10. Is the chairman of legal affairs ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication 10. Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests that the Cross Connection Control Ordinance, Chapter 17, Section 1718, be updated per the attached document. The adoption of this updated ordinance will help with the safety preservation of the water quality within the City of Lemister Water Distribution System, which is a continuous goal of the Department of Public Works. I'm actually not sure, am I, am I required to read the entire ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay. So I am missing, okay, I got it. Let's see.
I haven't read your.
No, I haven't, I gotta just, I just gotta get it in order. D, E, G, okay. All right, so, Cross Connection Control, revised Chapter 17, Section 1718. A, Purpose. Any connection in piping whereby a public or private water supply used for drinking or culinary purposes is connected to a secondary supply or a supply of questionable quality or whereby polluted matter may enter the supply used for drinking or culinary purposes shall be considered a cross connection. These connections may be within residential, municipal, commercial, institutional, and industrial buildings. Number two, to protect the public potable water supply from the possibility of contamination or pollution by isolating such contaminants or pollutants which could backflow or back siphon into the public water system. Three, to promote the elimination or control of existing cross connections, actual or potential, between its customers, in plant potable water system and non-potable systems. Four, to provide for the maintenance of a continuing program of cross connection control which will effectively prevent the contamination or pollution of all potable water systems by cross connection. B, Authority. As provided in the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act of 1974, Public Law 93-523, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Drinking Water Regulations, 310 CMR 22.22, the water purveyor has the primary responsibility for preventing water from unapproved sources or any other substances from entering the public potable water system. Number two, as provided in Chapter 21, Article 2, Section 21.9 of the Lemister Code of Ordinances. Number three, no cross connection shall be installed unless the piping connections and valves connected thereto have been approved by the Board of Health indoor the Lemister Water Division after tests showing that no polluted matter from such fixtures can enter the water supply system used for drinking or culinary purposes. And all existing cross connections shown to be improper by test or inspection, as herein indicated, shall be removed. Check valves or other uniflow devices may be considered as suitable mechanical means of separation only if these devices are accessible for overhauling or inspection and equipped with drains and test outlets and if the installation is approved by the Board of Health and the Water Department. Temporary connections shall not be permitted. Number four, valves of the positive type which include gate, globe, stop, and similar valves are not considered as adequate protection. Number five, any cross connections permitted with a fire service, boiler feed, process, or other secondary supply shall be protected by a properly installed and adequately supervised all bronze rubber sealed double check valve of a type approved by the Board of Health and the Water Department. C, Responsibility. Number one, the Lemister Water Division shall be responsible for the protection of the public potable water distribution system from contamination or pollution due to the backflow or back siphonage of contaminants or pollutants. If, as a result of a survey of the premises, the Lemister Water Division or his/her designee determines that the approved backflow prevention device is required at the city's water service connection or is in plant protection on any customer's premises, the Lemister Water Division or his/her designee shall issue a cross connection violation letter to said customer to install approved backflow prevention devices. The customer shall, within the timeframe determined by the Lemister Water Division, install such approved devices or devices at his own expense, and failure or refusal or inability on the part of the customer to install said device or devices within the specified timeframe shall constitute a ground for discontinuing water service to the premises until such device or devices have been properly installed. D, Definitions. Air gap separation. The method of preventing backflow through the use of an unobstructed vertical distance through the free atmosphere between the lowest opening from any pipe or faucet supplying water to a tank, plumbing fixture, or other device in the flood level rim of the receptacle. This unobstructed vertical distance shall be two times the diameter of the line supplying water, but never less than one inch. Number two, approved. Accepted by the reviewing authority as meeting an applicable specification stated or cited in this regulation or as suitable for the proposed use. Number three, approved backflow prevention device or devices. A method to prevent backflow that is approved by Mass DEP for use in Massachusetts. Number four, atmospheric vacuum breaker. An approved backflow device used to prevent back siphonage which is not designed for use under static line pressure. Number five, auxiliary water supply. Any supply of unknown or questionable quality on or available to the premises other than the supplier's approved public potable water supply. Number six, back pressure. Pressure created by mechanical means or other means which causes water or other liquids or substances to flow or move in a direction opposite to that which is intended. Number seven, back siphonage. A form of backflow due to reduced or sub-atmospheric pressure within a water system. Number eight, backflow. The flow of water or other liquids, mixtures, or substances into the distribution pipes of a potable water supply from any source other than the intended source. Number nine, backflow prevention with intermediate atmospheric vent. A device having two independently operating check valves separated by an intermediate chamber with a means for automatically venting it to the atmosphere, in which the check valves are forced, are force loaded to a normally closed position and the venting means is force loaded to a normal open position. Barometric loop. A loop of pipe rising at least 35 feet at the topmost point above the highest fixture it supplies. Certified backflow surveyor tester. An individual who holds a valid Massachusetts backflow prevention device testers certificate or a surveyor's certificate or a combination test surveyor certificate issued by Mass DEP. Lemister Water Division. The City of Lemister Water Division or owner or operator of a public water supply system. Number 13, contaminant. Any physical, chemical, biological, or radiological substance or matter in water. Number 14, cross connection. Any actual or potential connection between a distribution pipe of potable water from a public water system and any waste pipe, soil pipe, sewer, drain, or other unapproved water source. Number 15, cross connection violation form. A violation form designated by the Lemister Water Division which is sent to the owner by the water supplier with copy sent to Mass DEP, plumbing inspectors, and Board of Health delineating cross connection violations found on the owner's premises in a procedure for corrective action. Mass DEP, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Number 17, design data sheet. Shall mean a form approved by the Lemister Water Division which is submitted to the Lemister Water Division or his/her designee along with plans for each installation of a reduced pressure backflow preventer, double check valve assembly, or for each change to any such device already installed, describing and showing the details of the specific installation. Number 18, double check valve assembly. A backflow prevention device which incorporates an assembly of check valves with shut-off valves at each end and appurtenances for testing. Number 19, in plant protection. The location of approved backflow prevention devices in a manner which provides simultaneous protection of the public water system and the potable water system within the premises. Number 20, inspection. Shall mean the physical examination and testing of an installed backflow prevention device to verify that the backflow prevention device is functioning properly. Number 21, non-potable water. Water that is not safe for human consumption or which is of questionable quality. Number 22, owner. Any person maintaining a cross connection installation or owning or occupying premises on which cross connections can or do exist. Number 23, permit. A document issued by the Lemister Water Division which allows a cross connection installation. Number 24, person. Any individual, corporation, company, association, trust, partnership, the Commonwealth, the municipality district, or other subdivision or instrumentality of the United States. Number 25, pressure vacuum breaker. An approved backflow prevention device designed to prevent only back siphonage and which is designed for use under static line pressure and which has necessary appurtenances for testing. Number 26, reduced pressure backflow preventer. An approved backflow prevention device incorporating, number one, two or more check valves, two, automatic operating differential relief valve located between the two checks, and three, shut-off valves, and four, necessary appurtenances for testing. Number 27, residential dual check. An assembly of two spring-loaded, independently operating check operating check valves without tightly closing shut-off valves and test clocks generally enjoyed immediately downstream of the water meter to act as a containment device. Number twenty-eight, reviewing authority, the Lemmister Water Division, his/her designee, or the city plumbing inspector authorized by Master General Law, Chapter 142, and licensed by the Board of State Examiners of Plumbers and Gas Fitters are responsible for the review and approval of the installation of an approved backflow prevention device.
Counselor Dubraski, do you want me to read a page in between?
Sure.
A page.
I don't know, do you want to start now?
I'll start with E and then I'll go to the next page and then you can finish.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
E, administration, the Lemmister Water Division will operate an active cross-connection control program to include the keeping of necessary records which fulfills the requirements of the Mass DEP's cross-connection regulations and is approved by the Mass DEP. Two, the owner shall allow his property to be inspected for possible cross-connections and shall follow the provisions of the Lemmister Water Division's program and the Mass DEP regulations. F, requirements, one, Lemmister Water Division, A, on new installations, the Lemmister Water Division or his/her designee will provide onsite evaluation and/or inspection of plans in order to determine the type of backflow preventer, if any, that will be required and notify the owner of plan approval requirements by the appropriate reviewing authority. B, where premises existing prior to the start of this program, the Lemmister Water Division or his/her designee will perform surveys of the premises and reviews of as-built plans and issue a cross-connection violation form to the owner detailing any corrective action required, the method of achieving the correction, and the time allowed for the correction to be made. The time period allowed shall depend upon the degree of hazard involved. C, the Lemmister Water Division will not allow any cross-connection to remain unless it is protected by an approved backflow preventer for which a permit has been issued and which will be regularly tested to ensure satisfactory operation. D, if the Lemmister Water Division or his/her designee determines at any time that a serious threat to the public health exists, the water service will be terminated immediately. E, the Lemmister Water Division shall have on its staff or shall have a delegated representative who is backflow prevention device tester, surveyor certified by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. D, definition, one, air gap separation, the method...
I read, we read D.
Oh, we read those, okay. Oh, that's good, I wanted to read them again because...
No, no, they were snazzy, I agree.
Okay, so, gee. Owner, right?
So, we're on two, right, right.
Owner, the owner shall be responsible for the elimination of protection of all cross-connections on his premises. The owner, B, the owner shall be responsible for applying for and obtaining all necessary approvals and permits for the maintenance of cross-connections and installation of backflow prevention devices and applying annually for the renewal of each permit. C, the owner shall have any device that fails an inspection or tests repaired or replaced by a licensed plumber within fourteen days. D, the owner shall inform the Lemmister Water Division of any proposed or modified cross-connection and also any existing cross-connections of which the owner is aware but has not been found by the city's cross-connection representative. E, the owner shall not install a bypass around any backflow preventer unless there is a backflow preventer of the same type on the bypass. Owners who cannot shut down operations for testing of the devices must supply additional devices necessary to allow testing to take place. F, the owner shall install backflow preventers in a manner approved by Mass DEP and by the Lemmister Water Division. G, the owner shall install only reduced-pressure backflow preventers and double-check valve assemblies approved by the Mass DEP. H, any owner of industrial, commercial, or institutional premises having a private well or other private water source must have a permit if the well or source is cross-connected to the city's system. Permission to cross-connect may be denied by the Lemmister Water Division. The owner may be required to install a backflow preventer at the service entrance if a private water source is maintained even if it is not cross-connected to the city's system. I, the owner of any residential premises having a private well or other private water sources will not be allowed a physical cross-connection with the public water supply system. J, the owner shall be responsible for the payment of all fees for permits, backflow prevention device testing, retesting in the case that the device fails to operate correctly, and second re-inspections for non-compliance to Lemmister Water Division or Mass DEP requirements.
You want to take it over?
John O'Callaghan, if you want, for a while.
I'll take it, yeah, I can do it. Thank you very much, Counsel Freda. G, degree of hazard, the Lemmister Water Division recognizes the threat to the public water system arising from cross-connections. As such, the Lemmister Water Division, whereas he/she is responsible for the quality of the public water supply, may require a containment device on the water service entrance to any customer who, as a result of unprotected cross-connections, could contaminate the public water supply system. Number two, any existing backflow preventer shall be allowed to continue in service unless the degree of hazard is such as to supersede the effectiveness of the present backflow preventer or results in an unreasonable risk to the public health. Number three, where the degree of hazard has increased, as in the case of a residential installation converting to a business establishment, any existing backflow preventer must be upgraded to a reduced-pressure backflow preventer, or a reduced-pressure backflow preventer must be installed in the event that no backflow device was present. Four, any fire system where an approved water source can be pumped into it by the fire department or fire pump system will require the installation of a reduced-pressure backflow preventer. H, enforcement, number one, the Lemmister Water Division shall not allow a cross-connection to exist within the public water supply system unless it is considered necessary and appropriate approvals and permits have been issued. Number two, unprotected cross-connections are in direct violation of the Drinking Water Regulations. The Mass General Law's Chapter 111, Section 168 prescribe a fine of twenty-five thousand dollars per day and a year in jail for each willful violation of a Drinking Water Regulation promulgated by the Mass DEP. Number three, unprotected cross-connections may be subject to additional fines prescribed by the Lemmister Water Division. Additionally, failure to comply with the regulations set forth in this section may result in termination of water service. I, approval process, I'm sorry, approval procedures, number one, as per Mass General Law, Chapter 111, Section 168 and Section 22 of the Drinking Water Regulations of Massachusetts, 310 CMR 22 dot 22, all installations of reduced-pressure backflow preventers and double-check valve assemblies and cross-connection installations must be issued a permit from the Lemmister Water Division or his/her designee. Number two, in order to be issued a permit, a plan showing each installation must be submitted to the Lemmister Water Division for review and approval. This plan must include the following, A, a completed design data sheet, B, a schematic showing incoming water lines, the separation of domestic and processed water, the type and model number of the device to be used, and all clearances involved in the installation. Number three, after review and approval of plans on the subsequent installation of backflow prevention devices, an initial inspection must be arranged to verify the correct installation of the device and to conduct a test of the device to ensure proper operation. The permit to maintain a cross-connection will be issued by the Lemmister Water Division or his/her designee after such initial inspection has been conducted by the Lemmister Water Division. J, existing in-use backflow prevention devices, number one, any existing backflow preventer shall be allowed by the Lemmister Water Division to continue in service unless the degree of hazard is such as to supersede the effectiveness of the present backflow preventer or result in an unreasonable risk to the public health. Number two, where the degree of hazard has increased, as in the case of a residential installation converting to a business establishment, any existing backflow preventer must be upgraded to a reduced-pressure backflow preventer, or a reduced-pressure backflow preventer must be installed in the event that no backflow device was present. K, periodic testing, number one, reduced-pressure backflow preventer assemblies and double-check valve assembly devices shall be tested and inspected at least semi-annually by the Lemmister Water Division, the Mass DEP, or its agent. The city reserves the right to perform additional tests at any time. Additional periodic testing may be performed by the Lemmister Water Division certified tester or his/her delegated representative who shall be certified, shall be a certified tester. Number three, this testing shall be conducted during the Lemmister Water Division's regular business hours. Exceptions to this may be allowed when made at the request of the owner and may require additional changes to cover the increased costs to the city. I apologize, it may require additional charges to cover the increased cost to the city. Number four, any backflow preventer which fails during a periodic test must be repaired or replaced by a licensed plumber. When repairs are necessary upon completion of the repair, the device will be retested at the owner's expense to ensure proper operation. High-hazard situations will not be allowed to continue unprotected if the backflow preventer fails the test and cannot be repaired immediately. In other situations, a compliance date of not more than fourteen days after the test date will be established. The owner is responsible for spare parts, repair tools, or replacement devices. Parallel installation of two devices is an effective means of the owner ensuring that uninterrupted water service remains during testing or repairs of devices and is strongly recommended when the owner desires such continuity. Number five, backflow prevention devices will be tested more frequently than specified above in Section K1 in cases where there is a history of test failures and the Lemmister Water Division feels that due to the degree of hazard involved, additional testing is warranted. Costs of the additional tests will be the responsibility of the owner. L, records and reports, number one, records, the Lemmister Water Division will initiate and maintain the following, A, master files on customer cross-connection tests and/or inspections, B, master files on approved cross-connection installations, C, copies of lists and summaries supplied to the Mass DEP. Number two, reports, the Lemmister Water Division will submit the following to the Mass DEP, A, initial listing of high-hazard cross-connections, B, initial listing of low-hazard cross-connections, C, annual update lists of items one and two above, D, annual summary of cross-connections, inspections, and surveys. M, strainers, the Lemmister Water Division strongly recommends that all new and retrofit installations of reduced-pressure backflow preventers and double-check valve assemblies include the installation of strainers located immediately upstream of the backflow device. The installation of strainers will preclude the fouling of backflow devices due to both unforeseen and unforeseen circumstances occurring to the water supply system such as water main repairs, water main breaks, fires, periodic cleaning and flushing of mains, et cetera. These occurrences may stir up debris within the water main that will cause fouling of backflow devices installed without the benefit of strainers. N, lawn, garden irrigation, number one, all new or existing residential, municipal, commercial, industrial, and institutional property owners are required to have in place a reduced-pressure backflow device or a double-check valve assembly device on their irrigation system. This type of device will be decided by the Lemmister Water Division or his/her designee upon submission and approval of a design data sheet and plumbing plan. Two, in regard to existing pressure vacuum breakers, these existing devices must be installed at a minimum of two feet above the highest sprinkler head as determined by the Lemmister Water Division or his/her designee or be replaced by a reduced-pressure backflow device or a double-check valve assembly. Number three, these existing pressure vacuum breaker devices will be installed by the Lemmister Water Division or his/her designee, I'm sorry, will be inspected by the Lemmister Water Division or his/her designee and may continue to be utilized unless it fails in testing, at which time it must be replaced by a reduced-pressure backflow device or a double-check valve assembly as determined by the Lemmister Water Division or his/her designee. That's the ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the ordinance?
I'd like to have a beer with a guy who wrote that.
Could I propose my book as an ordinance? So, could I read it into an audiobook file for me?
It's a very arduous process, but a very serious one, we all recognize when it comes down to water protection and quality in the city.
No, that's an important ordinance.
So, thank you for muscling through it, we really appreciate that. We do have a hearing coming up and you're going to have to do a second reading, of course, but do you have a recommendation tonight?
The recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Counselors, are the recommendation right to grant, excuse me, to adopt the first reading of the ordinance for Communication 10? Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a road call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Odenger.
Yay.
Counsel Bananza.
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Dubraski.
Yay.
Counsel Freda.
Yay.
I should record a yay by a vote of eight to nothing. The first reading of the ordinance has been established, thank you. Would you have a public hearing?
We had.
We had, so we're all set with that, we don't have to do a second one, we just have this on the next agenda. Thank you, appreciate it, okay. We don't have anything listed, are there new business or old business? I want to take one moment, Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yeah, thank you, could I, I do have an old business update. At the last city council meeting, I had asked for an update as some of the neighbors had asked me what was happening with the athletic proposal, the athletic complex up behind the high school. So, we did get a response from Wendy Weeks for the mayor, and if you don't mind, I would just like to, it's brief.
Go ahead, sure.
So, I'll just read it in. Says, here is an update, hi Caitlin, here is an update from the mayor. As you know, Whitman and Bingham has been working with the school department during the past year on various changes to the design of the athletic field. In addition, we have all worked closely with the neighbors to adopt any suggested changes possible. Currently, the electrical engineering firm is working on the electrical design of the entire complex. In addition, we have a signed contract with Whitman and Bingham to carry us through bidding and construction management. Whitman and Bingham is now looking to start the permitting process with the hopes of bidding by the end of the winter. So, I just want to let the neighbors know that that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other items? Okay, I'm going to just take a moment, I want to thank all the people that were involved with the Johnny Appleseed Festival this year, the 26th Annual, and I would like to thank the following sponsors, the Golden Apple sponsors, Lemmister Credit Union, UMass Memorial Health Alliance, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Rollstone Bank and Trust, Lemmister Cultural Council, Mass Cultural Council, Paul's Rental, and Doubletree by Hilton. We also had silver sponsors, Silver Apple, Lemmister TV, Gagne Realty, Fidelity Bank, Viola in North America, Life Care of Lemmister, New England Apple, Congressman James McGovern, Enterprise Bank, Longstone Limited, Lemmister Telecommunications also did some work there as well, along with the sponsorship, New England Apple, and Central Street Car Wash. The bronze apple sponsors were Digital Credit Union, IC Federal Credit Union, Piper Electric, the Carolis Insurance Agency, O'Connor Portraits, Enterprise Bank. I'd also like to reach out and thank the city clerk's staff who worked with me for pretty much ten months on this project, so we appreciate all your help, the mayors administrative team, the comptroller and treasurer, the Board of Health, the Department of Public Works, emergency management, fire and police departments, Bob Hailey, our music director, and the dozens of volunteers which included schoolteachers and students as well, so we really appreciate it, it was a great day, a little warm this year, but it still was a lot of fun, and I want to thank you very much, and the meeting's over, thank you.
Mr. President, before we leave, just...
Our community calendar, go ahead.
Yeah, no, there was a gentleman...
Yeah, no, there was a gentleman coming out of church the other day, he stopped me, and he just wanted me to relay compliments of the DPW and the city for the sidewalks and just all the work that's being done throughout the city. You know, he's very proud of it and really appreciates, he's in the Carter Street area, and I guess they're doing new sidewalks there, and he just wanted me to relay the information that he's very happy and he's thankful.
That's great, thank you. Anything else, Counsel?
Yeah, before the next meeting, I'll be presenting my history book of Lemmister, Risk Takers and History Makers, October 3rd, which is a Thursday, at 7:00 PM at the library, and the following Thursday, October 10th, at the Historical Society. Both are free events and open to the public, and the Historical Society has a whole list of other events, including a cemetery tour that I'll be conducting in October, and some Drake House open houses, which I'll announce at the next meeting.
That's awesome, thank you. Congratulations. Any other items under community calendar, Counsel?
Just real quick, the next meeting, we haven't had one for a while, but the next meeting is for the police station, is October 4th at 7:30.
Okay.
We'll be meeting with the project manager.
Thank you.
Seven thirty in the morning, or in the morning?
Yes.
AM.
AM.
All right, thank you. We're all set? Meeting's adjourned.